Okay, welcome. This is our regular city council meeting. Eddie, could you please call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Hosh.
Russell.
Here.
Uda.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
And I should say it is August 5th, 2024, at about 7:44 PM. Next thing we'll do is excuse some members. There are none. Approval of the minutes. Here's the thing. We got this, we had one, two, three, four, five minutes from May, June, and July 2nd. We didn't get the packets till like Friday night. So I'd like to put approving the, I didn't get a chance to read through the minutes because we had such a large agenda. So if it's okay with everybody else, I'd like to put off the approval of the minutes till our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Is there any objection, any discussion? All right, do we need to vote on this, Mr. Law Director, on approving the minutes at the next meeting instead of this meeting? Okay, thank you. Communications from the mayor. Sometimes we go too fast.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that I'd like to announce, I'd like to make a matter of record, that sealed bids were received on July 12th, 2024, for Project 2404, Clarendon Road and Edrily Road Water Main Replacement and Road Resurfacing Project. Five companies submitted bids. Terrace Construction submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $2,243,252.83. Sealed bids were received on July 18th, 2024, for Project number 24-10, Compton Greenway Traffic Circle Project. Parkland Contract Contracting LLC submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $78,806.18. And then I would also like to request permission to go to bid on the following projects. 2408 Sanitary Sewer Pipe Repair Project, it's SSPR Phase 1, and 2409 Catch Basin Repair Project Phase 2.
So we need a motion to author, Mr. Law Director, we need a motion to authorize these bids?
They've already been received.
To authorize permission to go to bid.
Yes, a motion to authorize.
Okay, so I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
You have a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Go on, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I want to take a little bit of time to address the legislation that I vetoed on July 4th, and the legislation itself that is under reconsideration on today's agenda. I think that this story, the story of where we find ourselves now related to this veto is unfortunate. And I think it could have been avoided with a series of different decisions. The council unanimously approved the creation of two distinct resident committees, both providing something new relative to these topic areas. The original committee that these two committees replaced had a particular purpose, and that purpose was exclusively to provide advice to city council related to transportation and environmental sustainability issues in the city of Cleveland, Cleveland Heights, rather, sorry. In this case, the two committees that were created separating the topic areas had a different purpose. And that purpose was to provide advice and recommendations to both the mayor and to the council. A compromise was struck on co-creating the membership of these boards. And in January, council approved the creation of two boards where the mayor appoints a minority of the voting members, three out of seven, of course, giving council the ultimate authority to reject or accept the mayor's appointments. And then council would appoint the majority of the membership of this board, either of those boards. This compromise, I think, showed respect for not only the new system of government that we are in now, but also to the expanded purpose of these boards, not just to provide council with advice, but to provide the mayor and the administration with advice in these important topic areas as well. Council had a discussion about reappointing former members of that previous board who wished to be reappointed. And several months after they did some of that, I believe April 1st, council appointed to these boards. I think on April 2nd, I had a meeting with the council president, and the council president asked me what my plan was for the remainder of those appointments. And in that meeting, I expressed to the council president that I was trying something new, that I'm trying to actively recruit people who are not necessarily the usual suspects, people who perform the kind of work at a high level, at the regional level, at the state level, at the national level potentially, but haven't done work in the city they live in. And so I'm searching. I'm searching for people to round out these committees. And that it was probably going to be a little bit difficult because I was trying to find people who aren't the normal self-selectors, but who have something to offer. And I was not informed at that time, nor was I informed, I guess, until it was too late, that there was a degree of frustration rising among some of the council members about how long I was taking in my process to fill these appointments. And I think that's one of the things that I hope in the future we do differently. And Councilwoman Larson, in particular, has expressed to me that she was experiencing a level of frustration that was not being communicated to me. And so I, you know, I let Councilwoman Larson know that I welcome a phone call, just a direct communication from you expressing that in the future. But in this case, that was not communicated to me. And my goal, and I think what I've achieved, was a very considered recruitment strategy that looked for professional expertise, people who potentially are doing the work right now, related to these issue areas, at a high level. And I think I've achieved presenting those to the council for their consideration. I really didn't have too many opportunities between when council made their appointments and I presented my appointments to council, my initial appointments to council for their consideration on June 11th, for addition to the June 17th agenda. I did present those to council, and consideration was refused at that time. I understand the frustration, and I hope that we don't have to experience that kind of frustration again. And perhaps in the future, this council can either consider those sorts of time limits on either their appointments and/or the ones that I would be presenting to council for their consideration and confirmation. But more than just that, I think maybe just having the conversation directly is an important way to avoid this kind of conflict, if you can call it that, in the future. I think right now, we're at a point where we also need to look at what the best policy is for Cleveland Heights, not just the history of this particular decision. And I am firm in the belief that the connection that we create with residents by appointing them to these boards and commissions that, you know, are supposed to, at this point, provide advice and recommendation to both branches of government, would be seeded by a cooperative effort of both branches of government. I imagine that this council has the five votes necessary to overturn the veto that I've sent to you. But I do hope that some of you might reconsider and maybe continue to take the path of cooperation with the administration and see where this path leads, instead of pulling this particular trigger and reversing what I think was progress in January. Now, I know that there are some of you, like for instance, Council Vice President Davida Russell, who has on, and I know this from very personal experience, because I watched Councilwoman Russell do the work at the county level on two occasions as a member of the Charter Review Commission at the county. An appointment that was made by the county executive, subject to council's confirmation at the county level. I know that Councilwoman Russell has experienced sort of the benefit of being included through that executive appointment and council confirmation process. And I know that Council Vice President Russell was also not present in the special meeting where the vote was taken on these two pieces of legislation. So I don't exactly know where Vice President Russell stands on this, but I would urge her to consider her own experience. And it's not just the county executive. I know she's been appointed by the governor as well. And in part, that's led her here, and has been a part of the reason why the people of Cleveland Heights voted for her to be in this position. And I think that that's something that we can continue to offer here in Cleveland Heights. I don't think that there is some specific concern about executive appointments subject to council confirmations. And so I'm asking each one of the council members who initially voted to approve these pieces of legislation and sort of reverse the compromise that we came to in January, to reconsider and to continue this experiment, only six months in, to the experiment of us collaborating on these appointments. And I think that we can possibly communicate a little bit better about our expectations and our goals for these committees in a more direct way, so that we can avoid this kind of thing in the future. Again, that is my request to each of you who voted to approve those pieces of legislation, to reconsider that and continue on a path of cooperation with me. And to those of you who either did not vote on that legislation, or voted against that legislation, to not overturn this veto and allow the current law to stand. And with that, I yield back. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Turn that over to Eddie.
Matt Hayes. And by the way, these are legislative agenda items only.
Thank you.
General.
Just so you know, and this won't come off your time, everybody has three minutes when they come up. Please say your name and maybe the street you live on, and have at it.
My name is Matt Hayes. I am the president of the Firefighters Union here in Cleveland Heights, and I wanted to speak on ordinance 125, 2024. I was in the room for the negotiations. We went, we ended up going to fact finding because we could not reach an agreement with the city. And so we went to a neutral third party who came back with their ruling. The union voted on it last week and overwhelmingly approved it. And I would appreciate if council did the same and approved it so that we could get a new contract underway. We're already four months past our contract expiration date, and we would just appreciate your support in this. So that's it. Thank you.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Counselor is Mr. Mayor. The Republicans in the Ohio State House have their act together. If they don't like the law, they just break it. They feel they're above the law. If they don't like the will of the people of Ohio expressed in the ballot box, they do their best to obstruct, deflect, create alternative legislation, confuse the issues, anything they can to keep the will of the people from being enacted here. So far, they've been able to get away with it because of gerrymandering and just a general level of corruption that makes Ohio one of the notorious states in the union to get a thing. All of those Republicans in the State House have sworn an oath to abide by the laws of Ohio. You also have sworn an oath to abide by the laws of Ohio, but some of you apparently feel that you are also above the law. You regularly violate Ohio's open meeting laws. And when it comes to the will of the people of Cleveland Heights, who voted to enact a mayor, city council form of government, and elected a mayor, some of you have devoted yourselves to making that dysfunctional. In addition to that, in some of your illegal conversations, you've talked about hiring a lawyer to represent the council specifically, and your criterion for that lawyer was not competence, it was not integrity, it was loyalty. Loyalty, Trump talk. Project 2025, install loyalists in positions of authority. You want to spend city money to hire a lawyer to be your loyalist fixer. I don't want to be doing this. I am terrified of your retaliation. You've got the means on your agenda tonight. Later on, you can vote not to appoint me to the Arts Council, and that would hurt me deeply. I want to belong to this community. I want to serve the community, and it would be a great loss to me if I didn't, wasn't able to pursue that appointment kind of thing. But I have to speak. I have to call you back from the brink, please. Right now, the United States is being torn apart by people who believe they are above the law, and some of you are part of that tearing apart. Whatever your intentions may be, your actions are illegal. Maybe you've sleepwalked up to this point. Maybe you were thinking, well, other counselors are doing it, it's okay for me to do it. But it is not okay. If you want to serve the interests of the people of Cleveland Heights, do it legally and openly. If you can't do it legally and openly, maybe they are not the interests of the people of Cleveland Heights. If you tear apart our democracy this way, you are tearing apart the city. Please step back. I'm not asking for a recantation, an act of contrition. Any statements, just don't move forward with these issues because you are destroying the democracy that you think you are representing. Again, I hate being here because I'm afraid of you. I am afraid. You have power, and I have none, and you are abusing your power. Don't break the law in serving the city. That's not service. That's corruption. So please, please take a step back. You don't have to say anything when the time comes, just don't do what you're planning to do.
Gary Benjamin, Monmouth Road. I'm here to talk about the veto. In my career, I have served on four citizens' bodies for governments created to advise those governments. In all cases, the citizens advisory boards were appointed by the groups or group that wanted to be advised. In Detroit, it was a group that was set up to determine how to create a single portal of entry or of application for senior citizens to receive services from multiple agencies. Every agency, including the mayor and the city council, had an appointment. It was approved by the city council, and we advised all of them. I was recently on a county advisory board. The group was created by an ordinance which named specific organizations that got representation, and others were selected by the chair of the committee and accepted by the county council. We were to advise the county council. Here, I chaired an economic development advisory committee in 2017. We had seven members each appointed by a member of council, and we were to report back to council. Under the city manager form of government, that meant we were advising the administration because the boss of the administration reported directly to the council. And advice to the council was pretty much, if accepted by the council, an order to that administration. That is what happened. After this committee reported out, we made four recommendations. Future Heights become a CDC. The city target business areas that need help and provide that help. Shift the dialogue to a positive one for the city, and support the arts. I think all of those have been done at this point. Finally, I served on the racial justice task force. We were to advise the council, but we were formed under the city manager form of government. About halfway through our work, the elected mayor form of government came into place and began his oversight of the city government. The mayor, as a council member, participated in creating and appointing us all, 25 of us, to the task force. But who did we advise? I'm still not sure because of the change in government. That made a difference. We could advise the council, but it can't tell the mayor what to do on administrative issues. The point is that the appointees to a citizens panel of any type should reflect the organization or organizations intended to receive the advice. After all, those organizations know it is possible, realistic change, and their input would be crucial. And by input, I mean not just discussion, but also vote. If you want to affect the administration, it needs the ability to at least nominate people that would qualify to these two boards. It is not appropriate now to claim you are appointing a body to advise the city administration. In the spirit of openness, good government, and collaboration, the veto, the veto should be upheld.
Hello, I'm Melody Joyhart, I live on Monmouth Road. I'm here to speak in regard to the appointments to the newly separated Transportation Committee and Environmental Sustainability Committee. To provide a little history, Transportation Committee was a single committee at one point. Economic Sustainability was added to it later. This committee under the city manager form of government was calling in staff for meetings twice a month and would issue their findings, providing directives to the staff with the city manager approved of, because the council, even though this was supposed to report to council, because the council was the boss of the city manager. At one point, the city manager thought this was inappropriate for them to direct staff, and attending two meetings a month was not workable, so she halted some of those practices. Now that we have an elected mayor for our government, which is over, which over 60% of the residents voted for, the administration should be included in the appointment process, just like just about every other well-functioning mayoral city does. The efforts at the last meeting to not put his appointment, which he delivered to you, on the agenda, and to vote the legislation in was a very divisive move, and appears to be indicative, actually. If your real issue is you wanted the appointments quicker, you could have called him. You could have altered the legislation to provide a timeline after which you would appoint, just as the council has a timeline for its appointments, rather than to take the appointments away, as you did. The residents are frankly getting exhausted with the divisiveness and the lack of collaboration with the administration. If you have the best interest of the residents at heart, please eliminate the divisiveness and begin collaborating with the mayor. Please consider what President Biden said in his inaugural address, quote, "Let us listen to one another, hear one another, see one another, show respect for one another. Politics need not be a raging fire destroying everything in its path. Every disagreement doesn't have to be a cause for total war," end quote. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Matthew Weimer, Mayfield Road. Good evening, members of council. I'm here today to share my concerns over two ordinances. Ordinance number 102, 2024, and number 103, 2024. At the city council meeting of January 16th, 2024, council moved our city forward by passing two ordinances, 196 and 197, establishing a framework through which the legislative and executive branches of government would collaborate in determining the composition of two committees, the Transportation and Mobility Committee and the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee. It's noteworthy to point out two facts regarding both ordinances. First, they were passed on second reading. And second, the amount of time for making the appointments to the two committees was not important to council. If council believed appointments to the committees needed to be made urgently, council would have included language in each ordinance that clearly set forth dates by which appointments must be made. Council instead chose to not include any mention whatsoever of timelines or deadlines. Want for timelines notwithstanding, in passing 196 and 197, council communicated a willingness and a desire to work with the administration towards a betterment of our city. I remember January 16th, 2024 well, as it was also at this meeting that council passed ordinance number 187 and 188, creating the city's first Form-Based Code section, is now contained in the C2X Multiple Use Zoning District, and amending the zoning map to apply the new Form-Based C2X district to portions of South Taylor Road, respectively. Passing 187 and 188 was the culmination of a significant collaborative process and a major step in the right direction for our city. To summarize, on January 16th, council did a great job by passing four ordinances that moved our city forward. It was a good night. In April, council appointed individuals to the TMC and CESC. Shortly thereafter, but no later than May 30th, council took several steps backwards, unfortunately, beginning with the memorandums to ordinance number 102 and 103. Each of these memorandums explicitly state that council intended to quite literally reverse course and move backwards by undoing the progress it made January 16th. And council's intention, according to the two memorandums, was to reverse course as soon as possible, evidenced by the fact that both memorandums indicated that the corresponding ordinances were to be passed on first reading. All of the sudden, there was a sense of urgency with respect to the appointments. I have a lot more to say. I'll just end saying this.
You can summarize.
Please don't do this. Things were going well. This new form of government has been working. Things are happening in the city that haven't happened ever. There's collaboration with private industry. Things are moving in the right direction. Please do not do this. Thank you.
I'm going to adjust the mic. Good evening, council. My name is Alex Pesta. I live on Superior Road. First and foremost, I want to thank our first responder. Thank you for everything you do for our city of Cleveland Heights. It's much, much appreciated. I'm here to make two points to this, to this legislative body. One, and I think it's clear by the room, that the residents are paying attention to what is being done, and frankly, what is not being done by this board. And second, that this move to overrun the veto and the legislation that is put forth is reducing the mayor's role that has been outlined, that we voted for as a constituency in passing issue 26. So first, we're paying attention. Tonight's ordinance is 102, 1103, 2024, which a lot of folks have talked about would amend the legislation that council approved in January 2024. You just did this. You just passed this, and now you're changing the rules. You're moving the goalposts, and we're tired of it. I'd like for you, I'm going to give you 10 seconds of my time to think about all of the time and resources you've I think we would all rather have you spend time doing things that serve this community much better. This is not important to us. What's important to us is that you are a functioning body of government, and that you're acting to what we voted for, and that is issue 26, which is an elected mayor. And by doing this, by taking away the mayor's appointees, you are eroding his, you're eroding his power, you're eroding his role in this city. Done a little bit of research, and in 2024... Done a little bit of research, and in 2019, when we took the vote, 64 of the voters voted for an elected mayor. And this is from the issue 26 campaign website. Yes, on the charter amendment makes it possible for us to elect a qualified mayor who can bring needed leadership and vision to our community. Council has no place picking our leaders. It is our community. It needs to be our choice. And in an article penned by Council President Kuta and the Heights Observer, perhaps the biggest benefit of issue 26 is that it puts the voters in charge of leadership of our city. We'll have more accountability and leadership. We all know exactly where the buck stops. The proposed legislation erodes the role of mayor and consolidates power into the decision-making of council. This is the opposite of what we voted for five years ago, and feels like a very slippery slope for council to have more control over the executive branch of government. We elected him to serve us, not council. Lastly, let's not change the policy or adopt new legislation just simply because we do not like the current mayor or don't agree with his policies. That is not who Cleveland Heights is. I believe that the fidelity of the office should rise above beyond personal differences in between the branches of government. So again, we're paying attention. We already voted for in 2019 for issue 26. I strongly encourage this council to accept Mayor Sarin's veto on these two ordinances tonight because they never should have been put forward by this body in the first place. Thank you.
That's it for agenda item comments.
Okay, very good. All right. All right, so we're at new business now. So, Eddie, would you read the first ordinance?
Reconsideration of ordinance number 102-2024, an ordinance amending section 140.02, members of chapter 140, Cleveland Heights Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the codified ordinances of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. This was adopted by council June 24th, 2024, and vetoed by Mayor Sarin July 4th, 2024, introduced by council member Larson.
Is there a motion to reconsider?
I move to reconsider.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments? What do you want to say, Councilman Maddox? You can go first.
I'll just state again for both ordinance 102, 2024, and ordinance 103, 2024, that I'm in disagreement with these. I do not believe that these were done in good faith. I do not believe that it promotes collaboration, and I believe this sets us back. I think it was hypocritical of this council to make a decision to replace those ordinances that essentially fed into our collaboration with the mayor because we felt like we were impatient. And I say we, but I do not hold myself accountable or responsible for these two pieces of legislation that I think serve to further divide this community and its leadership. It's my desire that if we're going to set guardrails, or if we're going to set limits or time limits on selections for the mayor, we should have done so for ourselves. I've stated to this community multiple times, we couldn't even decide on our own council pick. It took so long that the mayor had to select, and then to turn around and change this ordinance within weeks is just a slap in the face. He did not have the time that they're stating that he had. There are seven members of this council who all have to take time, review applications, interview possible folks for board appointments. He's one man, one man who was invested not just in filling the seats, but making sure that there was new talent, new voices and diverse voices at the table. If you look at these ordinances, by the way, which are on tonight, many of these appointments, which is part of the confusion I think we're adding, this council is going to add to by trying to reverse this veto, if you look at this, these are gifted and talented people. He didn't just go out and pull them out of a hat. You can see that he took time and had conversations with them, and many of these people, in some cases, had to be convinced because they seen the divisiveness on this council. It's not like someone was just going to sign up on this committee. Admittedly, there are people in this room that wouldn't dare touch a committee right now because of what's happening across this council and between this mayor. And so being able to see these and being able to see the results of those conversations have and how they bear fruit, I think speaks a lot to what we're doing here tonight. He didn't just sit on his hands. He invested in going into places in this community that in many cases, this council has not gone to. He went and had conversations with people in neighborhoods that in many cases are underserved and are not heard. And in addition, he went and he found gifted and talented people who do this work every day to bring that ideas and those insights to these committees. That's not someone who's, who's holding their hand. That's someone who's invested in the future of this community. I think we moved too quickly on this. I voted no before. I'm going to vote this down as well. I'm in complete disagreement with this. And again, I think it's hypocritical to state that he took too long when we never even gave him a date. It's not in the legislation. It wasn't ever discussed when this was created. It wasn't discussed in the initial legislation, and even now with this, it's not discussed now. And so I think that the community needs to take a closer look at how we are responding to this. And then I'll say this lastly. I also believe that this is connected to a much broader issue that we're having in terms of the investigation, and I know many of you have heard the mayor state it. And so I refuse to believe that this legislation needs to pass while we are still looking into that investigation and how this and many other decisions this council have made are connected to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Petrus.
During her comment, Melody Hart included a quote from President Biden. Just to remind everyone, it reads, "Let us listen to one another, hear one another, see one another, show respect to one another." In my day job at Case Western, I lead large initiatives. At my core, I am a problem solver and a collaborator. I can't believe I'm having to share this, but as the mayor knows, I have handwritten him probably a half dozen cards. At the Black History Month event at the community center, I even got a picture of him, had it printed and framed and gifted it to him. And I feel that I have made every possible, I have done everything within my power to collaborate with the mayor. The reality is that the mayor does not engage with many members of council. I repeatedly reach out to him about ARPA, about my deep concerns about that legislation being passed in December, and eight months later, we are still having trouble getting this money out and the risk that we could have to return some of this money to the government, and the mayor just does not respond to me. In the case of Councilwoman Larson, she has been on this council for two and a half years, and the mayor has never once met with her. So there are folks on this council who are eager to collaborate with the mayor, who have tried repeatedly in good faith to collaborate with the mayor, and that has not been reciprocated. With regard to the appointments themselves, as folks know, the legislation was passed at the beginning of the year. The mayor was not making the appointments, but it's not just these two committees that he was not making appointments to. There's the Arts Commission, and there's the Community Investment Corporation. The Arts Commission, I was grateful that the mayor, on tonight's agenda, there are three folks who he nominated to that Arts Commission. I look forward to reviewing their credentials. But in the case of the CIC, no one has been nominated. The mayor shared during our second housing meeting in June that he had three people in mind, but we still don't have any legislation for these folks. This is especially important because in the case of the CIC, council allocated $300,000 to the CIC and ARPA funds. We need to know whether the CIC is going to be able to use this money. Otherwise, it needs to be reallocated, or we are at risk of having to return that money to the federal government. The mayor needs to appoint, just nominate, just one person to the CIC, and we still do not have any names for it. So in my view, because we are not getting nominations for these, because there are real risks that we face, I support overturning the veto. Thank you.
Thank you, President Kuta.
Go ahead.
When I voted yes on ordinances 196, 2023, which created the Transportation Mobility Committee, and 197, 2023, which created the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee in January of this year, I did so because I wanted to see collaboration between the mayor and council. The appointments that were made by, we made our appointments for council in April, April 1st, 2024. We waited for the appointments or any communication updates from the mayor that he was working on his appointments. We did not receive anything in that, to that effect until he said the date tonight, June 11th. Regarding the amendments I've introduced tonight, or this is second reading tonight, that appointments made, excuse me, reconsideration of veto, appointments made of the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee and Transportation and Mobility Committee specifying that citizen appointments be made by council, I did that to move these amendments forward so that we can get efficiently into place a process where people who apply for these committees, who have a lot of expertise, the people that are on these committees right now have expertise, and that's not to be disrespected. When I did that, I asked, I did call President Kuta to ask him, how do I proceed? I called President Cobb to let him know I wanted to do this. How do I proceed? These amendments will provide a way forward for appointments to these two committees to be made by council. That's providing an efficient appointment process that our citizens on these committees deserve, both those currently serving and applying now and in the future. That is where I stand, and I will be reconsidering the veto.
Looking side to side. Anybody else want to speak?
I would just be repeating myself if I did. I said earlier, I thought that this was a petty and vindictive thing to do, and I stand by those remarks. None of the other ordinances that this city has imposes a time limit on these appointments to the various boards and commissions because it's never become an issue until now. I just think that this is ill-advised. These are not lifetime appointments to the Supreme Court where it matters what your political viewpoint is on various issues. These committees are residents that are interested in serving the city, and it doesn't matter whether that appointment, in my view, comes from the council or the mayor, because ultimately all of these, if they're mayor appointments, they still are subject to council approval. And if there's someone that the mayor were to appoint that we didn't want, then we could reject them. I would ask my fellow council members not to undo this legislation that I worked on with the mayor over several months to draft something that I thought would be collaborative and would move this city forward. And in case anyone doesn't remember, I was opposed to this change in the form of city And here we are. And what those of us that were opposed to this change in form of government warned was that things would become very political, and there would be essentially disputes between the mayor and city council over the control of power in this city, and that is exactly what has happened.
Thank you, Councilman.
Oh, wow. The mayor is right. I've worked under and served under many, many forms of government as well as labor. And if most of you have followed me most of the time, you know from day one, I was never, ever, ever for giving up the appointments of council. From day one, I talked about it during the charter review commission. I talked about it with these appointments here. I only supported the original appointments due to Mr. Cobb's and Gail Larson asking that, give the mayor a chance to collaborate with us, and let's make these appointments, and let him have a chance to make those appointments. But I was never for that. It had, it has nothing to do with spite. It has nothing to do with any of the things that people are talking about. It's just my perspective of how the form of government should operate, period. And that is a difference of opinion. It is not about being spiteful. It's not about being political. It's not about anything because our job is the residence of the city. Collaboration, I think a lot of people on this council have tried their best to be collaborative, very collaborative, very, maybe to each other, to people you can talk to, but we have tried to be very collaborative. And most people know the history. Everything I have ever put forward in legislation has never moved forward, period. I have talked about the splash pad, nowhere. I've talked about the dog park, nowhere. I've talked about a lot of different things for parks and recs. Nothing has happened, none of the legislation, the funding for the, for the pool, nothing that I've ever put forward that you know as residents, that I have attempted to move forward in this city, has not gone anywhere. I'm looking for collaboration. I have asked council to join me into helping to create legislation collaboratively. Yes, let's do this. I get an email since TWG, since my vote no on TWG, the mayor will not talk with me, period. He has instructed council president Kuta that he will no longer have any conversations with me. I am trying to collaborate. What have I done other than to try to move things forward? This is nothing about me liking the mayor or disliking the mayor, and I wish people would stop saying that. I am making that very clear. This has, this is not a personal issue for me, period. This is how I deem and how I think government should operate. I do not believe in any shape or form that no one person should have the ultimate power, none. I believe in separate forms of government, three branches that are totally separate, but collaborate together. We elected elected mayor, an elected mayor so the residents have the choice to say, if I don't like you, you go home. They did that because council refused to fire the city manager because the resident was not liking the way she was performing. So we went to an elected mayor, not a strong mayor. I don't believe in a strong mayor. We believe in an electorate mayor where you, the people, can say, if you don't do what I need you to do to move this city forward, I can remove you, not council. Before, it was council had the choice to remove or to fire, not the residents. That why, that's why there was a change. I've been here since 2020. You all know I work hard in this city. I do a lot of things in this city. So it is not personal. I put myself and my heart and my soul into this city, into this community, and most of you, before you came in this room, and people who are watching, already know where my platform was because I don't hide it. I am very transparent of how I feel about government, and I do not believe government is supposed to have one person with all power. I don't care if it's in the United States of America, it is dangerous. So I was never against, never. So let's make this clear. I was never against giving up council's appointments from day one. That had nothing to do with this committee. That was period. So I will be moving to uphold Councilwoman Larson's position.
Bush? Okay. All right. Well, yes. No, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish up here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, this is council's turn right now.
Mr. President.
So here's what I'm gonna do. Here's what I'm.
Mr. President.
I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read my, my statement. I, listen, I've heard some, I think I've heard some important things, and it's part of the story. I want to give you the rest of the story. I wholeheartedly support Councilwoman Gail Larson's legislation to return citizen committee appointments, appointment authority to city council because it is the best decision for our community. It's, this has just taken way too long. Council currently appoints, and listen carefully to this, council currently appoints all members of the following committees, boards and commissions. The Architectural Board of Review, we appoint them all, the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission, the Commission on Aging, the Citizens Advisory Committee, the Landmark Commission, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Racial Justice Task Force, and there actually are others. No one has suggested that the mayor make any appointments. No one has suggested that the mayor make any appointments to any of those committees. So we need to take a look at this as a policy decision, not just something about these particular two committees. So here's my reasoning. Council has one employee, okay, the clerk of council, she's doing a great job. The mayor- The mayor, on the other hand, has hundreds of employees. And even though there are currently some vacancies at the director level, the mayor has access to all kinds of expertise, all kinds and a variety of issues. And these are all people who report to the mayor. I believe our citizen committees are the best way for council to tap into wealth of expertise that we don't have through hires and people that work for us. I believe that the collective judgment of our council members produces, produces a diverse and qualified group of residents that serve this community and put this city's interests above all other considerations. And we do it in a timely manner. In short, the current policy of our council making the appointments works. It works. We do it quickly, and we do it efficiently. On the other hand, we have had problems with the Transportation Committee, formerly called TSC, for well over a year now. People have quit this committee because they said the mayor had refused to allow city staff to attend their meetings, and they just left in disgust. The mayor has not made a single appointment to the two committees and commissions he created last year, as Councilman Petrus brought up, the Arts Commission and the Community Improvement Corporation. And when he created the legislation for those two committees, the mayor made it in such a way that he made all of the appointments for these two new. But I have to say, the experience of sharing appointment authority with the mayor regarding the Charter Review Commission last year only confirmed my support for Councilwoman Larson's legislation. In my view, giving the mayor partial appointment authority put a drag on things, and it dragged out things at least an extra three or four months last year. And when city council did not confirm two of, two of his appointments, in my view, the mayor became very confrontational and angry. So this whole idea of, well, I'll make the appointments, and you guys confirm the appointments, there's more to the story than that. It can get very nasty after that happens. All of this has confirmed my instinct that council and the mayor should always collaborate, and we do. But we need a separation of powers when it comes to certain decision-making authority. And I mean as a policy, not just for this mayor. I'm not saying this is the most important policy issue that will ever come before our community or for this council, but this is still a new government, and it is incumbent on this council to make decisions that will benefit our community with regard to the way we make decisions and govern. The fact is, the mayor and the majority on council are not going to agree on every single issue. But my God, we've agreed on so much. There are many issues, even recently, like the TWG project, the Russo deal, where we worked actually very closely together, the DORA issue with having recreational drinking on Lee Road. And we worked collaboratively to make changes that clearly benefited the community. This should not be divisive. It should not be an expectation that it's going to be 100% agreement on every issue. We can still collaborate with the mayor informally and on appointments. We did it when the mayor suggested Ken Surratt for the Planning Commission. But I believe very strongly that Councilwoman Larson's way is absolutely the best policy for our community. You know, I know Councilman Cobb said that he thought this was petty and vindictive. You know, not all, I think Councilman Cobb knows very well that these things, the separation of powers and checks and balances are very, very important to me. I don't think this is any mystery to anybody. We've talked at length about how we need two co-equal branches of government, and that simply means that we have to have two branches fully empowered to do their job. That's what it means. And right now, we're not. We're just not. And that can be addressed in a number of different ways, but we have a lot of examples, I think, where we've worked together, and mayor, we will continue to work together. So on this-
Mr. President.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move now.
No, we're not. I will not allow you to make another statement and paint another African-American man as angry simply because he doesn't agree with you. That's the second time you have tried to do that and painted us as a broad brush. African-American men who are competent and competent are not angry. Where we are, where we are is fed up. So you need to stop with the narrative. I don't care at this point, because what you just did was a slap in the face if you continue to do so.
You are not recognized.
Every time an African-American man disagrees with you, he is not angry or unhinged. And you trying to continue to paint that narrative is part of the problem.
Just so you know, I don't think that.
It's been my experience for the last two years with you, and you just did it to the mayor just now. And you tried to belittle that African-American man sitting next to you, telling him he knows what he should know. You don't tell him what he thinks. That has been the problem on this council. It's your arrogance, and it's your willing to slap people of color in the face.
We have a call question. Go ahead, Council.
Mr. President, I have asked you to be recognized, and the charter indicates that the mayor may introduce ordinances and resolutions in the council and may participate in the meetings of the council. If you do not allow me to speak on this, Mr. President, you are in violation of that particular provision of the charter, and I would appreciate-
Mayor, I completely under-
... your attention to a simple statement that I could provide.
Mayor, okay, please, please, audience, thank you. Mayor, I understand that provision in the charter, and I understand where you're coming from. You, you did have your say in your council, in your, I'm sorry, in your mayor's report. And I appreciate that. I didn't put any time limit on it. And what we usually do, and I don't, and I think it's good policy, is we let everybody go one time. And I think everybody's had their say, and I'm, hopefully you feel like you've had your say. I would, you know, I don't really ever, you know, do anything intentionally to squelch debate, you know, people come up and they say pretty much what they want. Go ahead, Mr. Lauder.
President, if I might, I had been thinking that the mayor had spoken following the making of the motion to reconsider. I think that I was mistaken, and I do think that under the, under the charter provision, he has an opportunity to speak on the motion at hand.
I'm sorry, when did you say that? The first part?
Earlier, I was thinking that the mayor had spoken on this motion already. But it's my belief now, looking and thinking back, that he has not. And I do think that he's entitled under the charter to speak on a piece of legislation to the same extent as any other, as a member of council.
Even if he spoke on it previously?
But not during the-
We weren't in discussion.
There was no pending motion at that point in time, so no debate on a pending motion.
Can you make it quick?
I will do my best, Mr. President. I wish that we hadn't had this debate about the debate. So I, I think that you can probably sense my, the frustration that has arisen in me as a result of the danger of not being able to speak on this. And I want to assure you, as I have since 2015, I have been in this room, participating in sometimes vigorous debate, sometimes accepting with what I would call grace, the various slings and arrows from a variety of people in this room. And I don't believe that I have ever once lost my equanimity, and I don't believe that I have lost my temper. And so I do take some offense, and I would like to express that to you so that it is on the record and something that I'm not holding back. I do take some offense to the characterization that I got angry and therefore acted in some way. I do, and I hope that you would provide me the benefit of the doubt, that I do believe that it is the best policy that when a board is intended to provide advice to both branches of government, that both branches of government are involved in the process of seating that board, even if the mayor has a minority of the appointments and they are subject to council confirmation. And I do want to briefly address just a couple of the things that have been said since I spoke at the beginning of this meeting. Vice President Russell mentioned the concern about one individual in the government having all of the power, and I share that concern. And as is evidenced, every single time I come in here, I'm asking council for permission, as I did earlier, for permission to do a wide variety of things. I'm not asking for all of the power. What I'm asking is to be involved in the discussion about who sits on a board that is intended to advise me and my administration. Now, when it comes to Councilman Petrus's comments, I would like to advise the councilmen that ingratiation is not collaboration. And I appreciate the notes that you've sent me, but that is not true collaboration when you turn around and vote to remove something without ever speaking with me, or I guess speaking with your colleague and encouraging her to speak with me about her level of frustration. As I indicated earlier, I would have been very receptive, and in fact, I called Councilwoman Larson to have that conversation. And I told her, as I've told her before, that she is very, very welcome to call me. And I would like to speak with her about the things that she has concerns about. I try to make sure that my directors get back to council members as quickly as they can about the variety of questions that council members, in particular, Councilwoman Larson, ask. She is a very, very frequent questioner of the administration, and we appreciate that, and we do try to provide as much information as we can. And I have met with Councilwoman Larson in her committee meetings, where we've discussed things in full view of the public, providing information. And when I can't be there, I'm sure, I provide my directors to be available as well. And it's the same with other committees of this council, where my directors have frequently shown up to have those discussions with you, whether or not I'm there or involved in the discussion. I have requested to just be in the loop, and I think that that makes the most sense for an administration that is still in the growing and developing stage like ours. But in this case, I believe that council has a choice to make. This is a proactive decision. The timeline and the frustration was simply not communicated by your leadership, Councilor Larson. And if it had been, this would have been a very different conversation. I would appreciate the chance to show that to you, and I think that we can do it. You've got a full set of appointments that you can consider right now. And then we can continue this experiment and collaboration between the branches of government, and I urge you to reconsider.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just, let me just say before we vote that we will continue anytime the mayor has an idea or person that he thinks we should consider. That's, we're not, we're not stopping that from happening. But for all the reasons I stated, I think we need to be consistent with all those committees we talked about, and we will. As far as collaboration goes, you know, a kind of not-so-good tone was set early on. The mayor refused, I can't tell you how many times I sent emails and requests to meet with the mayor. I was oh for the first two years, and so were several of the other council people. Zero personal meetings for two years. One council person quit over that. She just figured, you know what? If I'm not gonna talk, if nobody's gonna talk to me, and I'm not gonna get any kind of recognition, I'm leaving. So there we go, you know? I, I wish this was something, but you know what? On a variety of issues, I think we work well together. I don't think this is one of them, but anyway, let's go ahead and call the question. So I need a motion.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider.
Motion, second to reconsider. So why don't we do a roll call on this?
Cobb?
No.
Kuta?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Maddox?
No.
Russell?
Yes.
Petrus?
Yes.
Posh?
Yes.
All right. And then would you? Eddie, would you please read the next?
No, we need a motion to adopt.
I move to adopt.
All right, thank you. Because it is a different. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? It's the same thing.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just like to say that I take, I take deep exception to the mayor's characterization of my motives as being acts of ingratiation. This year, the mayor has introduced maybe about 100 resolutions and ordinances, and I believe that I have voted for every single one. Earlier, I shared some of my concerns. Just to share another example, in the committee of the whole meeting that we had before this, one of the issues that I hear most about is people's desire to swim at the high school. Earlier this year, council allocated $25,000 so that it could be used for paying for lifeguards. During this meeting, knowing that this is of such concern for folks, I asked the mayor if he could provide an update on that, as well as legislation that authorized and directed him to negotiate an agreement with the school district. That legislation was passed nearly two years ago. I asked if he could provide an update, and he said no. I asked if he could provide an email update, and I think that it was slightly different, but in essence, no. So again, there has been a good faith effort to collaborate with the mayor. I know that I will always be here and willing to work with the mayor, but this is one case where the work just was not getting done. And so for that reason, in this case, I also support this vote.
All right. Eddie, would you call the?
Discussion is still open, correct?
Oh, if you have something, yes.
Absolutely. So I'll be voting no on this again for the reasons I've already stated. And to be clear, for anyone watching this, the concerns that have been raised here is a complete lack of leadership. What you heard is that there are members of this council who think they're supposed to talk to the mayor through other people. I have stated this since January, that I was concerned about the leadership on this council. There is incompetence in key areas that are necessary to partner with this city, from process improvement to planning and development, to understanding simple leadership strategy to even run-
Point of information for a second here, please.
So it's important and critical.
I'm gonna let you finish. I'm gonna let you finish.
Fine.
My question is to the law director, is this on the topic that we're talking about? Because I don't think it is.
Mr. President, it's a fair question, but I would say that a lot of the discussion tonight has not really been on the topic of this legislation.
Yeah, we're trying.
Do you notice how that happens every time you hear something out of your mouth you don't like or make you uncomfortable? No, it's not. You try to stop people from talking so that you can run over and complete this narrative. But look how hard I have to work to do so. So how about you just let me finish?
Go ahead.
Can we do that?
We can do that.
We good? Thank you.
Yes, we can.
This is part of the disrespect that I'm talking about on this council. You just watched this man paint two black people tonight as angry. You just watched him paint this entire thing as a huge misunderstanding. This is a power grab from two people who do not understand city government. They don't understand collaboration. They don't understand organizational development. And so we are going around in circles constantly in this council and having to explain things to people, because unfortunately, there are people who are elected in this city who don't understand these seats that they are sitting in. They lack the experience and the understanding capable for us to move forward in many cases. So many other times-
Are we gonna continue outside of the legislation, or are we gonna do-
If you let me finish, I can connect it, but that's all right. But again, just because you don't like what I'm having to say, I listened to you say a lot.
It's not that I don't like-
A lot, right?
It's not that I'm not liking what you're saying.
Then how about you hold your feelings till I'm finished, then? Because we just got that same question answered, ma'am.
I'm just asking how long-
Vice President Russell. Until I'm finished saying what I have to say. Because it seems like I had to fight through this legislation. I've had to fight through planning and development. I've had to fight to get heard, even on Palestine. When are you all gonna let someone speak? Every time you disagree, you feel uncomfortable. You cut me off and paint me as the rude, disrespectful one. Good God. Not only do I let you all do this, but I let your fan club come in here and yell at me. How about, how about someone let me finish?
All right, go ahead.
I was elected just like you to speak for residents in this city, and many of them are frustrated I'm speaking on their behalf. I'm not saying anything that many of you hadn't gotten an email from our residents. They are frustrated with this leadership. They are frustrated it has come to this. And if you want me to tie it together, this legislation exists because our leadership doesn't have a clear understanding of how to lead, how to organize, and how to structure this government. It's why, if you look at any committee of the whole meeting we had, we spend more time answering the same questions over and over again than moving this city forward. So we're not going to get offended because I'm stating facts. But again, this council has major issues in its leadership, and this city continues to need to know. And if anyone is confused about that, all they have to do is watch our committee to hold meetings, or watch how we conduct many of our committee meetings. There's a clear understanding gap and a competency gap in leadership on this council. And the reason this council's been frustrated is because they don't understand the basis of city operations in many cases. That's how we have led to this, and that's what I wanted to state. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right.
Yes, I agree.
That's what we're doing. Go ahead, Eddie.
All is political.
Petrus?
I.
Maddox?
No.
Kuta?
Yes.
Cobb?
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Posh?
Yes.
All right. Those two motions pass. Amendments to the agenda?
No. Mr. President, we have one more.
Oh.
I have reconsideration of ordinance number 103-2024, and ordinance amending section 150.02, members of chapter 150, Transportation and Mobility Committee of- 150.02, members of chapter 150, Transportation and Mobility Committee of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, adopted by council June 24, 2024, vetoed by Mayor Seren July 4, 2024, introduced by council member Larson.
I move to reconsider.
Is there a second?
You have to do both of this.
We just did this.
Oh.
There's two.
We didn't do, no.
There's two.
No, we did, we did both of them. This is the second one.
No, you, you did one.
No. No, no, you did one. You did a reconsideration and adoption.
Two motions. Motion to reconsider. If that motion passes, then a motion to adopt. So that's two for each one if-
I'm sorry, two for each one. Thank you. All right.
I need a second, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Anybody want to speak on this? I hope not. Go ahead.
Um, and this may be a little off topic. And I just-
I guess that's what we're doing.
President Kuta and I have a good relationship. I consider him to be my friend. We talk frequently. We have an area of disagreement on some matters pertaining to the balance of government. And I don't want anyone to leave with the impression by my silence that I felt disrespected by President Kuta, or that he, you know, bears any racial animus against me. We just, we have a, we have a disagreement. But we talk frequently, and I think he would consider our-
Too much?
Yes. But not in violation of the sunshine laws.
Thank you. Thank you. I do appreciate that.
I'm still not in support of this.
And I still think you're wrong. Okay, go ahead, Eddie.
Maddox?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Cobb?
No.
Kuta?
Yes.
Petrus?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Posh?
Yes.
I'm glad to know y'all are good friends.
Now I do need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, Eddie, call the roll, please.
Russell?
Aye.
Petrus?
Aye.
Maddox?
Yes.
Cobb?
No.
Larson?
Aye.
Posh?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to amendments to the agenda. There are none. City administrators report. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Williams.
Brought the house down with that. Department reports. Who would like to make a, oh, departmental report, sorry. I don't think anybody's here to do that. All right. Report of the clerk of council. Eddie, you got a few here, huh?
I do have a few things. I apologize. Notify, to notify council that an application has been received from the Ohio Division of Liquor for the transfer of a D1, D2, D3 liquor permit from Pacific East Mayfield, Inc., doing business as Pacific East Japanese Restaurant, located at 1761 to 63 Coventry Road, to MJ Joy Restaurant Group LLC, doing business as Pacific East Japanese Restaurant, located at the same address. This matter has been referred to the mayor and chief of police. Second, to notify council that an application has been received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new C1, C2 liquor permit for Kadash Mini Mart LLC, located at 2213 North Taylor Road. Again, this matter has been referred to the mayor and police chief. Also, to notify council that all Class C and D retail permits to sell alcoholic beverages in the city of Cleveland Heights will expire on October 1, 2024. Every permit holder must file a timely online renewal application with the Division of Liquor Control to maintain privileges. Ohio Revised Code Section 4303.271B provides the legislative authority with the right to object to the renewal of a liquor permit premise, permit premises, and request a hearing. The legislative authority must pass a resolution that specifies the problems at the liquor permit premises and the legal grounds for the objection. The chief legal officer must also submit a statement with that, with the resolution that, in their opinion, the objection is based on substantial legal grounds within the meaning and intent of Ohio Revised Code Section 4303.29A. Both must be postponed no later than September 3, 2024. Again, this has been referred to the mayor and chief of police.
All right, thank you, Eddie. Is there any public comment, general public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
CJ Nash.
This time I wrote it down. A CJ Nash, Vandemar Street. The U.S. is a severely divided nationwide because news and social media thrive on drama and discord. Our federal government devotes too much time holding hearing after hearing after hearing, not because they have the political will to make meaningful changes based on what they learn, they hold them because they know news and social media platforms will pick out the juicy bits and run with it. Our state isn't much better. Social media and the way news has morphed into entertainment has divided the population. Individuals live more and more in bubbles comprised only of those who believe as they do. It's all a reality TV episode. Who got the last word? Who got the best dig? It's my way or the highway. All this does is divide us further. I saw the mayor's video online. Then I saw it on the evening news. I was so embarrassed for our city. The news did ask Councilman Kuta for a reply to the video. I thought his reply was professional and appreciated, that it did not spiral into a defensive diatribe, point fingers, or participate in he said, she said. We have a good law department that is perfectly capable of determining if something improper has or has not taken place. I'm fine with a mayor going on social media to communicate to the people that he or she has reason to believe that something inappropriate may have occurred and that the law department is looking into it. However, the rest was unbecoming for a sitting mayor and communicated to me that it had not been created to inform the public of a perceived improperly conducted council meeting. What I heard in that, what I heard in that video was an ego in campaign mode, not a clear logical head in leadership mode. People who thrive on last digs and one-liners loved that video. The video appeared to have been created and disseminated to further divide us into the mayor's camp or the council's camp, both of which I think is baloney. We hired a mayor to run the city, not campaign for the next election. We have too much of that clogging up our state and federal government now. There is no room for it in our city government. We did not hire an autocrat, and this is not a reality TV show. A mayor cannot run everything and do it well. We have a staff and council for a reason, and they weren't abolished when we changed from our form of government. I won't read the rest of what I wrote, but what I will say is, I have heard things here today that I know are not completely accurate, and my social media view of that video has been confirmed in my mind by what I've heard here, because there are many people who have already tried this in the court of social media, and that's wrong. Let our, if we have a problem, we have a law department.
Robert Sinlenger?
Good evening. I'm Rob Sinlenger from Euclid Heights Boulevard. Pretty much agree with most of what the previous spokesperson said. I cannot believe that I am sitting here listening to this juvenile behavior. Really? I mean, this is what we voted for, and I certainly don't want to see another drop of city money spent on any more of this argument. Grow up. You guys came here to serve. Do it. If you're not interested, there's the door. Help yourself to it. Thank you.
Patrick Slatter? Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
That's perfect. Patrick Slatter, Euclid Heights Boulevard. I just wanted to say, as far as economic development, thank you for what's been happening on Cedar and Lee. That's great. I'd like to see something similar happen on Coventry. A big concern is, I haven't heard an economic plan for Coventry. I don't know if there are tax incentives or punitive measurements that can be done for landlords that are just, you know, not renting. I guess they're getting tax deductions. I don't know how that works, but something. I'd like to hear a plan. I'm surprised we're not hearing reports from the, from the different departments. I think that would help, especially economic development. I'm curious about. Thank you.
Sir, let me just tell you that there is ARPA money coming to the Coventry CID, the Special Improvement District, and we are putting $500,000 into the garage for repairs. Hopefully, more to come.
Rich O'Donnell?
I haven't been to a council meeting in a number of years, and it's kind of like, thank God. Right? Rich O'Donnell, Blackmore Road, an 88-year resident in Cleveland Heights. And this, this is a personal thing. Because of the age my wife and I have, we have the normal, serious health issues. My wife has had to go call EMS to get her down to the clinic a number of times. And I had one at the end of, end of last year. So I know what she's going through. For the first time ever, we got an invoice. No, that isn't true. We got a statement from the, the city, city of Cleveland Heights Ambulance Department Board, you know, for, to send out a statement that said we were 60 to 90 days past due, never got an invoice. How the hell do I know I owe money if the outfit that was hired by the city in Streetsboro, so it's not even Cleveland Heights employees, this just doesn't make sense to me. If, over the years, we have all paid our taxes, and it's to pay the firemen, the policemen, the EMS people, now we're turning around and saying, oh, by the way, if you use them, you gotta pay a little more, right? Do we, do we ask residents to pay for the fire department to come out and help put out the flames? I, and part of my big problem is, I got this initial probe or statement on, I think it was June 11. I called City Hall, wanted to talk to the mayor, because I, I said, had a letter typed out, sent to him on July 8. I three times called to say, hey, can I talk to him? Have they got it? I'd just like to know what's going on. And I'm hearing this same thing from everybody here, deaf ear. If the guy doesn't respond, I don't know how the hell you can work together if people don't talk together. So I'll get off my host. But you guys and gals have a problem, and, and I don't, don't relish being a part of it. But God forbid, would you just get the damn job done, please? Thank you.
Robin Coslin?
Hi, Robin Coslin, Wood Road, Cleveland Heights, Ohio. And normally, normally, when I get up to talk for my three minutes, I don't bring something written out like this, but I wanted to make sure I stated what I needed to say very clearly. But first, two pieces of advice I got from my mother when I became a mom. And she said, don't raise your children on vacation, and that does not apply to anything here. But she also said, pick your battles. And, help me here. The second, pick your battles is what I'd like to talk to you about, Mayor. To your right are seven folks, and they were all elected. Some of them I voted for, some of them I like, maybe some of them not so much, and all of that is unimportant. They have been elected to do a job just like you have. It's nice when you enjoy the people you work with, but certainly not necessary. When these guys enact legislation, it is the executive branch's job, that's you, to enact the legislation to make it work. That's what I learned in ninth grade civics class. Anybody else have the same class I did? It would be better if the two branches worked together. It would be better if you could come up with satisfactory ordinances that pleased both groups. But again, not necessary. If they create the legislation, you got to enact it. I just know my, those two branches of government judicial gets confusing. I am deeply disturbed and disappointed by problems I see to my beloved Cleveland Heights. First and most importantly, we have ARPA funds that need to be used and used well. We can lose those funds, we cannot lose this once-in-a-lifetime money by dithering. Cleveland Heights doesn't have a finance director. You, Mayor Seren, appear unwilling to work with the school district to create community access to the indoor pool. The council passes ordinances that you will not implement. The reputation of our community as a lousy place to work is preventing us from hiring the best out there. City bills are not being paid in a timely manner, damaging our credit. Getting back to my mom again, if there's an issue that you feel is of vital importance that you get your own way, fight for it. Work, work members of council for the best resolution to the conflict. But you must not make every issue one you are willing to die for. Pick your battles.
Angel Fosolo?
Angel Fosolo, I'm on Edge Hill. I have a few different things, all kind of disconnected, and could speak all night based on stuff going on here. The first, with respect to bulk pickup, there've been a lot of changes. I know a lot of people have comments about it. I'm not going to criticize changes. It's taken some time for people to figure things out. My 15-year-old son is a scrapper, and because he can't drive, I'm his chaperone. So we're like Sanford and Son. He has these lovely maps that he laminated, and he knows the entire community now from a pickup, trash and recycling point of view. He knows, he couldn't, he could educate probably everyone on council and administration about some of the things he's seen in terms of problems about him not getting picked up. And what he wanted me to say tonight is the education piece is missing. Many of our residents do not understand what's going on with that. So that's the first part. The second, conditions around Cumberland Pool. In August of 2022, my mother fell heading into the pool on the longstanding broken pavement outside of Cumberland Pool. EMS was called. She was sent to the emergency room. Two surgeries later, nothing from the city, and no repairs. And so if anyone would like this, it's still cracking. So when I walked in to go take a swim last year, every time we walked in, it just gave a sick feeling in our stomach, everyone asking, how's your mom? How's your mom? She didn't make it back there. Every time we went back, my son would look at the, the walkway and say, that's where Gaga fell. Still, and it's getting worse. And I tripped over this on my way in the other day. I have to say, Todd in the Mayor's Action Center, lovely individual. He takes all the complaints. God bless him. But even though he's the, the face or voice of the Mayor's Action Center, he can't take action. Mr. Mayor, you have to. But what action you did take was put that ridiculous video up the other day. So you have a horrible Parks and Rec director leave, resign, asked to be fired, who knows? He has some comments in, in the media. Then all of a sudden, end of the night, there's this video, seven minutes, seven minutes. Horrible look, first of all. Second of all, if you have proof of anything illegal that happened, show some of us. Because I would like to see my tax dollars get spent to fix things like this, as opposed to your witch hunt, your fishing expedition, looking for something. Just because people interact with each other doesn't mean they violated sunshine laws. Last thing, some of that drama spilled over, and a now-deleted post with a board member and a member of this council brought up the sexual assault allegations against the Cleveland Heights School District. And I would like, I'd like to thank that individual, even though the post is now gone. Mr. Maddox, I would like to thank you for calling out the school board for the things they are not dealing with. I ask everyone on council and the mayor's office to actually put some pressure on the Cleveland Heights School District for mistreating, mistreating and dismissing victims of sexual abuse, abuse. There are two federal lawsuits against the school districts for Title IX violations.
Thank you. Any other?
That's all.
Oh, that's it. Okay. Again, as always, thank you for coming. Thank you for all your comments. We're not done yet, but just so you know, we are just going to read through a bunch of first readings for consideration, and then we have some comments at the end. Go ahead, Eddie. First readings.
Resolution number 121-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Old Dominion Brush Company for the acquisition of a LEAF FAC for the Streets Division of the Department of Public Works, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Seren. Second?
Well, these, these are first readings. Oh, I'm sorry.
These are for adoption.
For adoption, right. There we go. All right. Any discussion? No discussion. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next, I have resolution number 122-2024 on first reading. A resolution- A resolution authorizing an agreement with Lavery Automotive Sales and Service LLC for the purchase of two Chevy Bolt EVs, waiving competitive bidding and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go ahead, Addie.
Next, I have resolution number 123-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Parkland Contracting LLC to install the Compton Road neighborhood traffic circles through the use of ARPA funds and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 124-2023 on first reading. A resolution declaring the necessity of implementing a public services plan for the Cedar Lee Special Improvement District, Inc., and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren.
All right, Addie, we need an amendment to this.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Could I motion to amend the legislation to include Mr. Colware as a third member of the board?
If you can, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we shouldn't vote on the amendment, I'm sorry, on the legislation as amended. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 125-2024 on first reading. An ordinance to accept the fact-finding recommendations in the matter of City of Cleveland Heights and the Cleveland Heights Firefighters Association, Local Number 402 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO. SERB case number 2024-MED-01-0022, granting final approval of the compensation rates and benefits proposed by the tentative labor agreement with the union for the period commencing April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2027, giving the mayor authority to sign said agreement, amending section three of ordinance number 38-2023, wage and salary ordinance, to incorporate the labor agreement and declaring an emergency, introduced by Mayor Saren.
All right. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Anybody want to speak on this? Go ahead.
I'm really proud to vote yes for this. We've got great firefighters, we've got great EMS, and now we found a way to fairly compensate them. And this was good work done by the administration, the law department, our lawyers, your team. I'm very happy that we're able to vote for this.
Yes. Due to my state position on the union as a state vice president for the Ohio AFL-CIO, I am going to recuse myself from this vote on behalf of ordinance 125-2024, but you see my smile.
Mr. Law Director, do we have to vote on the recusal? No. Okay. Thank you. All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll just be brief. Every time the city has sent out surveys, one of the questions that has been asked us about our safety services and our fire department, and it always comes back with the highest rating. I think all of city council is going to be very happy to vote in favor of this legislation, and I'm glad that we're doing some salary adjustments to make our city a little more competitive with some other cities.
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for all your work, for the simple fact, they've come to my mom's house several times and helped out, so I'd like to thank you for your service.
All right. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 137-2024 on first reading. An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Cleveland Heights codified ordinances and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, and this is introduced by President Kuta.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 138-2024 on first reading. An ordinance accepting and ratifying the material terms of the Kroger co-settlement according to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding consistent with the terms of the July 21st, 2021 National Opioid Settlement Agreement and declaring an emergency, introduced by Mayor Saren.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 139-2024 on first reading. And I do apologize, this is mismarked, it should be Community Relations and Recreation Committee. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Hart Design Group, LLC for field verification, schematic design, construction documentation, permitting, bidding assistant, construction contract administration, and related services for the public improvement of renovating the Kane Park Administration and Dressing Room Buildings, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation be effective immediately as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
And I'll second.
Okay, very good. A motion and second, and any discussion? This is, yeah, for the dressing rooms in Kane Park, this will be, this is much needed. I've been back there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Next, I have resolution number 140-2024, also Community Relations and Recreation, on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tima Roofing Services, LLC for design and construction services for the public improvement of replacing the roof of the Kane Park Amphitheater, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation be effective immediately as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren.
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now we are on to first readings only, so I will go through these pretty quickly. I have ordinance number 127-2024 on first reading. An ordinance establishing salary schedules, position classifications, and other compensation and benefits for officers and employees of the city, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren. I have resolution number 128-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit, accept, and enter into any agreements with the United States Department of Transportation for a grant under the Safe Streets and Roadways for All SS4A Planning and Demonstration Grant Program to fund a Cleveland Heights comprehensive and equitable safety demonstration project, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. I have resolution number 129-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for utility engineering services associated with the replacement and rehabilitation of waterlines on Altamont Road, providing compensation therefore, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Saren. I have ordinance number 130-2024 on first reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 525 Law Enforcement and Public Office of Part 5 General Offenses Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights by adding a new Section 525.11, Conflicts of Interest, and a new Section 525.12, Secondary Employment and Business Activity, and renumbering subsequent sections of Chapter 525.
Okay, I'll be referring that to administrative services. Go on.
Next, I have ordinance number 131-2024 on first reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 105 Public Records of Part 1 Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights by adding a Section 105.03, Rules for City E-mails.
And that will also be referred to administrative services.
Next, I have resolution number 132-2024 on first reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Drew Herzig as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Are you referring?
Will be referred, and it's, go on. That'll also be referred to administrative services.
I have resolution number 133-2024. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Deidre McPherson as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Refer to administrative services.
I have resolution number 134-2024, first reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Nathan Mata as a member of the Arts Commission of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Also referred to administrative services.
Next, I have resolution number 135-2024 on first reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Fern Haught as a member of the Transportation and Mobility Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Need a motion to table this.
Actually, Mr. President?
Yes?
I'll withdraw.
Okay. Thank you.
I have resolution number 136-2024 on first reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Gail Lewin as a member of the Transportation and Mobility Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Also withdrawn.
On to second readings.
I have resolution number 110-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Sam Bell as a member of the Transportation and Mobility Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Withdrawing this legislation as well.
I have resolution number 111-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Carly Beck as a member of the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Also withdrawn.
I have resolution number 112-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Mohammed Irfan as a member of the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
Withdrawing this legislation as well.
I have resolution number 113-2024 on second reading. A resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Sean Terry as a member of the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure.
And withdrawing this legislation also.
All right. Thank you. Addie, thank you, that was a lot. Committee reports. Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. During the month of June, the Housing Committee met twice. We met once on June 11th, and during that meeting, the Legal Aid Society overviewed rights and responsibilities that they compiled for Cleveland Heights tenants. So they are going to come back later this month and share with us an update on the work that they've been doing. Our hope is to pass a resolution or ordinance that would ensure that renters are better aware of their rights here in Cleveland Heights. On June 25th, we also met, and our planning director, Mr. Eric Zamp, came to the meeting and provided a really excellent overview of all the different properties that are in the city. Also during that meeting, the mayor shared that he had identified three people for the CIC. Our committee is meeting a little later this month than usual. We typically meet on the second Tuesday of the month, but because of scheduling conflicts, we've been asked if we could meet on August 20th. So that meeting will be here on the second floor of City Hall at 5:00 PM during that meeting. Like I shared, we're going to get an update from the Legal Aid Society. And then we're also going to start to review the housing-related recommendations from the Racial Justice Task Force. The staff is preferring that we talk about maybe one or two of each of the recommendations each month, and so this will be the first time that the planning director comes and talks about one or more of them with us. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you. The Finance Committee will meet August 15th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Items on the agenda include discussing the Racial Justice Task Force recommendation, which suggested collaboration with other municipalities, pooling your economic strength to encourage banks to increase the number and amount of loans in African-American communities. I've invited the members of the Housing and Economic Development Subcommittee of the Racial Justice Task Force to come to that committee meeting, and they will be joining us. And then we'll have initial discussions regarding council's budget process, because budget season is fast approaching. We'll also discuss the 2024 budgeted capital expenditures to see which ones we need to follow up on for next year, and also discussing the 2025 council budget. Then the Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will meet August 26th at 10:00 AM. Public Works Director Klink Scale will be present to give the committee an update on the traffic studies that have occurred in 2024 and any decisions made as to which streets to prioritize for traffic calming in 2024. Thank you.
Councilman Bosh.
The Public Safety and Health Committee met last Tuesday to discuss the role of the committee and how we can collaboratively work together with our city administration. I would encourage my peers who didn't attend to review the public meeting video and the public supporting information. We didn't get a whole lot done. We asked President Kuta to discuss with the mayor on their weekly meeting this week and how we can have a productive meeting next month.
Council Vice President?
Yes. We will, Planning and Development will have a meeting on August 20th at 10:30 AM, and that evening at 6:30 PM, we'll have the second public hearing for the Dog Park. That's it?
August 20th.
6:30 PM, Dog Park, second public hearing.
Okay, any old business? Any, I don't see new business. Oh, that's right, because we did that already. Councilmember comments? Any councilmember comments? Yes, go ahead. Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Saren, for signing the proclamation for the retirement celebration for Pastor John Lentz of Forest Hill Church, and Director Thomas for putting it together so that you had something to sign that was communicated to Pastor Lentz that he was a well-regarded member of this city. So it was warmly received by all who were in attendance that evening, so thank you.
All right. Any other councilmember comments? Yes, please.
Dennis Wilcox, former Cleveland Heights president of council and mayor, passed away in early July. In his leadership role, he made an amazing contribution to the city and our schools. There will be a memorial service for Dennis Saturday, August 10th at 1:00 PM at the Church of the Savior on Lee Road. Hope everybody could attend.
Very good.
1:00 PM.
Mr. President, thank you. Like many of you, I was deeply concerned by the piece in Cleveland.com for Mr. Ledbetter, our former Parks and Rec director, points to the deep management and culture issues that so many of us continue to hear about at City Hall. So firstly, Mr. President, I meant to bring this up during new business. Mr. President, I'd like to request that you invite Mr. Ledbetter to attend a council meeting so that we can hear directly from him and have an opportunity to ask him questions. As a reminder, over the last two and a half years, we have seen tremendous turnover at City Hall. Police chief retired, fire chief retired, our first city manager left after one year in the job, our parks director, Mr. Joe McCray, left, our second parks director, Mr. Ledbetter, as you, many of you have heard, left, our finance director, Amy Himmeline, left, our second finance director, Mr. Andy Yunetic, left after a year. And we are about to vote on a replacement for Mr. Yunetic, and that individual removed her name from consideration. We have no HR director, the list goes on. We have a vital interest in ensuring that the City of Cleveland Heights is an employer of choice and that employees want to come to work. So I'm going to introduce legislation that will have, that would fund an Amis Workplace Climate Survey for our city's employees so that we can learn more about their experience working here at the safe Cleveland Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments?
To the public, I know that you've seen the mayor's video, we've had discussions about this, you've seen it on the news, and I just again want to touch, let you know that I absolutely support this investigation. I know there's been a whole lot of smokescreen and there's been talk about a witch hunt, but I want to tell this public that it has been clear on multiple occasions that a majority of this council has met together, whether in person or in round robins. This isn't something that I have to wonder about, this is something that I look forward to submitting my evidence for. This is not a surprise to anyone. In fact, there are several times over the past two years I have asked for specifics how ideas or how things were created, and on camera, they admitted, on camera, that two got together, three got together, and then called a fourth one up. In some cases, they did back-to-back phone calls, and so I'm looking forward to this. I can say this publicly because I haven't been asked any questions, but I can tell you, as a councilperson, I haven't said anything tonight, I haven't continued to say. There is business happening in this city outside of the purview of all seven members of this council, and it needs to stop. And those issues have caused a huge gap in trust and in collaboration in this council. So again, I look forward to this, and I look forward to hearing what this council has to say once this investigation is completed. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. All right. President's report. Look, we've had a long night. I don't think there's any question that, you know, we all can't do better, and, you know, we have some work to do. ARPA, the Charter Review Commission, we've got the budget coming up. I mean, these are the big ones, and they require a lot of work. So I just want everybody to know, I, you know, I looked on social media and saw the reaction, and it was a lot of stuff about wanting the administration to get busy, about traffic safety, about crime prevention, about the maintenance of our parks, the maintenance of our streets, and the maintenance of our publicly owned property, improving city services, getting the high school pool open. I mean, these are the things that people care about. I really appreciate you all coming out and staying with us to the end of the night, and we'll see you, actually, we have a special meeting on August 12th at 6:00 PM, and then on the 19th, our next regular meeting. This meeting, mercifully, is adjourned.